You bet. Are we ready to go? Do you want me to repeat it? It being seven o'clock, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is citizen comment. After a careful survey of the audience. I can see there are no citizens here to render comments, so we've satisfied that element of the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the April 21 Planning Commission minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, final recommendations for the 2015 Comprehensive Plan update. I invite to the presentation table the Director of Community Development and Kenmore's Senior Planner.
Almost across the finish line.
[laughing].
Right?
Not planned.
Yay. So, the hope tonight is to go over any revisions to the following the public hearing or from the council comments that you heard. And then also tonight, if you can decide how you want to speak at the joint meeting on June 1st. And if you can accomplish that this evening, that means that you can have May 19th off. There's an incentive for you.
Any discussion? I think not.
And also, as you have to do first meeting, we may not be actually rea-- will we be ready for something on the second, or did we talk about?
I think we won't on the second.
So, actually, if we accomplish that tonight, you would not have a meeting on May 19th. You'd have the joint meeting on June 1st, and we may not be ready to bring anything forward to you on June 2nd.
We get that off too?
Get that off too.
Alright.
So, just to let you know.
Well, we're on salary, so that's been tracked.
That's right. Okay. Alright.
So, good evening. Before you tonight, as Debbie mentioned, are the last few changes to the Comprehensive Plan before it moves forward to the City Council for their review and final approval by June 30th. That's our state deadline. In the memo that I provided, I tried to summarize the public comment that you heard at the public hearing. I also tried to provide information on the comments made at your joint meeting with the City Council. And it's the staff recommendation, actually, that you make minor amendments to the vision statement, but we would not recommend any further changes beyond that. I'll mention that when the packet goes forward to the City Council for the June 1st joint meeting, and it would also go to you, that you'll see a few changes as we were-- these are technical changes. There are going to be policies that are renumbered and relabeled, and different figures will have different numbers. We had to sort of sort through, as we put the whole thing together, how the numbering went, and there had to be some adjustments there. So, I don't want you to be surprised by the fact that on June 1st, if a policy you were really interested in was formerly LU 5, it now might be LU 8. So, I just, I want to give you a heads up to that, because that could be confusing if you weren't aware of that. So, but beyond that, I-- the attachment in your packet, the last attachment to your memo, is the staff recommendations for the revised vision statement. These comments were made mostly in response to the City Council discussion with you all that occurred last month. So, I don't have more of a presentation than that. I am available for questions, or if you have other issues that you wish to raise.
Does anybody have any questions? Issues they'd like to raise?
We're going to go over these, just--
The staff recommendations? Lori?
Okay. So, if, as I said, it's on Attachment 4. It's the last page in your packet. So, the first change is the incorporation of the word "fun" in the overall introductory statement. And as you recall, at the joint meeting, that was soon after the Peter Kagayama presentation, and I think the City Council was hoping to-- their comments were to incorporate the word "fun" into the vision statement. And this place, in 2035, we see Kenmore as a fun, vibrant waterfront community, seemed a good place to put that.
Any comment? Somebody oppose to "fun"? I gotta say, I can see where they're coming from. I know they want it. I'm not going to fight it. But it just seems kind of juvenile to put it in there. So, that's on the record. I don't leave it at that. Anybody could say that. Detroit could say, "We're fun," you know? Did it change Detroit? Probably not.
Well, anybody could say they're vibrant, too. I think it's--
Yeah, I agree. And some of this is going to be--
It's aspirational.
It just sounds-- it sounds like, it sounds like an ad for some new game. But I just, you know, my concern is how seriously is somebody going to-- I'm going to relocate my business to Kenmore, because, well, let's see what they say here. Fun. It's probably not going to-- it just undermines a little more of the seriousness. But that's me, and I understand where they're coming from, and so, as I said, it's on--
I drank the Ken-- what is it?
The Kenmore Kool-Aid?
No, the Ken-- what's his name?
Oh, Peter Kagayama.
Oh, Peter, yeah. I don't know why I--
Were you there?
Oh, yeah. And I read both books.
And you drank the Kool-Aid?
Yeah, I drank the Kool-Aid.
How was that Kool-Aid?
Yeah, well, it's fun.
Pretty powerful, huh? You're still kind of riding the high, huh?
No, but it's--
Kool-Aid buzz going?
It's a way of kind of thinking about where you want to go as a city, and how to attract people. So, it's-- but it's, I don't know. I hear what you're saying, but--
Alright. I was hoping that we'd reach the cup threshold there. I just was wondering. Something important's going on over there. Glad we've made the finish line. Alright. Obviously, there's a majority in favor of the language proposed by the staff, so I'm not going to belabor the point. Anybody else want to-- do you want Lori to go through the other changes you proposed? I mean, we can all see them. Does anybody want to?
I can do it either way.
Yeah. A plea for a process question. At risk of draining the "fun" out of this, could we maybe go through this by exception, and then--
That's sort of what I was giving you, yeah.
And then move to a motion after that?
Yeah. I think it makes sense.
We could be here all night, rehashing everything we said before. I'm not sure it's terribly productive.
We could, but I'd probably cut you off.
Thank you. Just me?
Or whomever might want to really-- but yeah, does anybody have any objections to what the staff has proposed, or want to discuss any of it? Mark?
Well, I have to weigh in on the--
You know, I've already killed the "fun," so I'm not going to--
I hope that--
I'm not going to fight anybody else.
For the kill of fun. So, it's in the, yeah, in the second bullet about opportunities for an active, healthy whatever, through well-maintained parks, trails, open spaces, and recreational-- and recreation.
Which, Mike, Mark, what bullet point are we looking at?
Oh, the second one.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, yeah, I was the one who, I think, suggested citizenry, and don't certainly have any attachment to that. I'm not sure life kind of captures what the sentiment here. And I think maybe Deborah had something at the-- Debbie had something at the last meeting about either residence, or community, or-- I'd like to see another word besides "life" in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
It doesn't quite capture--
Life is more of a biology term, so I'd like to see--
I feel like I'm at church. You know, it just sounds so grave. But, you know, the word they kept using was "lifestyle," even though that's the word we struck, but it's such a common phrase. And I understand, Mark, where you were coming from.
Yeah.
You're not comfortable with it. But everybody uses it, so.
Well, that's why I say, you know, we're talking about the people in the community, right? We're supporting opportunities for them to have an active, healthy whatever through these various avenues, so.
Could it be community, or?
I might just weigh in here, that remember that we have that introductory phrase. In 2035, we see Kenmore as a fun, vibrant waterfront community that--
Supports active, healthy residents? Supports residents to be active and healthy?
Well, it's sort of like we're trying to modify. These are all adjectives. We could make them nouns. We could just say supports activity, health, and health.
So, like, supports activity and health through well-maintained parks, et cetera, that kind of thing?
Yep. In fact, I would strike, I would change, if we're going to do that, I would say recreation and health. Which would defeat the need for the last reference to recreation.
Alright.
So, I would read, I would have supports recreation and health through well-maintained parks, trails, and open spaces.
That's actually more accurate, because we don't really provide recreational opportunities. I mean, we don't, we, you know, the city isn't providing them, basically, so.
Plus, it's shorter.
You want to make that a motion? Should we move that?
Yeah, sure. I move to modify the language to supports recreation and health through well-maintained parks, trails, and open spaces. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Discussion?
That's fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, so let me read that back. Vibrant waterfront community that supports recreation and health through well-maintained parks, trails, and open spaces.
Recreation and health.
Right. Recreation and health. Great.
Any other exceptions, objections, comments on the remaining staff recommendations for the vision statement?
Did you--
Yes, please.
So, in your, I was kind of going back and forth between the cover letter, which said what you did. So, did you add the thing about co-creators?
I did not.
Okay.
Yeah, I felt that co-creators, although we may know what it means, if--
Exactly.
Others would not.
Good, okay.
No other questions, concerns, objections?
Mark has--
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, not an objection. I just want to say, I like the change from higher density to multifamily.
I agree.
Because higher density, I think, got some pushback, and I think multifamily is a more descriptive term, and less--
Threatening.
Threatening or fraught, so.
Yes.
So, I like that.
I do, too. Alright. Anything else? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to adopt the staff's proposed vision statement as amended?
I propose that we accept the changes as amended by the commission, recommendations by staff.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Vision statement is approved as amended. Alright, Lori?
Okay, so the next step is to see if there are any other changes to the draft. If not, then you would want to take action on approving your final recommendation.
Debbie, want to-- and this is in response to public comment?
Correct.
Or any other--
Or any other feelings.
Any other motive we might have at this point to make changes? Deborah?
I don't think it's a change, but there was a lot of discussion around displacement and affordable housing kind of thing. Where did we, where did we end up with that?
I think what we said was, a lot of those policies would be addressed in the housing strategy as an implementation measure.
So, how does that work? Is there going to be, when you say the housing strategy, what is that? Is that another task for the Planning Commission? Is it something the council takes up independently?
It was an implementation measure that was identified in the housing element. I don't know if I can flip to that. So, it's sort of the next step. So, the housing elements have the broad goals and policies, and the housing strategy's sort of the next level down for implementation. When that will appear on the work program, on the docket, I'm not sure. You heard the council express interest in moving that forward to perhaps 2016. And that decision then would be made in January of 2016 about what work program items to be included on the docket. And they will also then be deciding whether to send that your way for recommendation before they take action. So, I don't know when it will occur or not, but that's when the council would be considering when to put it on the work program.
So, I got the sense the council is, that some members of the council are anxious to address it sooner?
Yes.
So, it sort of means very little if they change zoning, for example, to address affordable housing by imposing a, an affordable housing requirement on certain parcels or certain areas. And for us to take it up in 2016, if they've done that already, doesn't, we're not going to have, that's sort of the carts before the horse in that case, right?
Well, you would be sort of reviewing then what the current policies are. You would be deciding then what's important for affordable housing. Do the current regulations support that? And if they don't, then you would be making changes. So, it's sort of, you kind of start from where you are right now, and you then determine where you are, and does it meet the goals of where you want to be, or do we need to make some additional changes to make those goals happen that are in the housing element? So, again, this would be a work program item that we would be working closely with ARCH. And it would be sort of taking a look at all aspects of affordable housing, how--
Do you see my point?
No, I really don't.
It sounds like they're anxious--
I'm sorry.
Oh, the council seems anxious to address this issue. Not through the comp plan, but through zoning or expenditure decisions before 2016.
I don't think we can get there before 2016.
Okay.
So, the soonest they could get there would be putting this as a work program item for 2016. So, the Comprehensive Plan would be adopted this year.
Mm-hmm.
And in that, an implementation strategy is saying you should have a housing strategy to further guide how you address affordable housing. So, it's the next step down, and we can't get to that sooner--
I'm not fighting on that.
This year.
And I get that. I just think, let's say one of these mobile home parks is up for sale. And that is the concrete example that came up a couple times. Sounds like there's some degree of support for rezoning or imposing some requirement to continue affordable housing on those parcels if that were to happen. And they could do that anytime. Is that right?
They could. There are some state requirements on, if a mobile home park is put up for sale, there are some state requirements on providing notice to tenants, et cetera. I don't have those right in front of me right now.
Right.
So, the question then is, is, I think, what the council were asking, is that sufficient protection? And if we want to have, keep affordable housing in a new development, can we require it, or should it be more of an incentive? So, there are different ways to look at it. And yes, there is a certain risk if something comes up between now and when those new rules are adopted, if that's what your concern is.
Yeah, I'm not advocating anything. I'm just sort of exploring how this might play out. And I'm glad you brought it up, Deb.
Yeah, well, I heard the exact same thing. It just seemed like there was some anxiety around, you know, this could happen anytime, given the development that's occurring around here.
I think that anxiety is there, but practically speaking, you have a docket assigned for this year, and they have already chosen the projects that the staff is working on this year. So, unless they come back and say, "We are changing what you're working on," that's not on the 2015 schedule.
No, I agree. There's no role for the commission--
Right.
Until they say so, and that may be after, my point is, that may be after significant changes have already been made. If that's the way it is.
There's always a risk for regulations, and you always, whether, either before you adopt them, or you want to change them, I mean, it's just the world we live in.
I agree.
So, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Just in terms of the public comment, and I don't think that I'm pretty sure this would not be part of the comp plan update, but there were a set of questions that had more to do with enforcement, as, yeah, as there are often. But, and, so I don't, you know, is there something we can tell those individuals about who they can go to to ask those kind of questions? Because slowly, they're, you know, coming to, I mean, we, you know, it's not our job, obviously, but--
I think the individuals that commented know where to comment. They've been to the council. They're aware of the process for code enforcement. So, I don't think it's a question of they don't know who to talk to directly about code enforcement. I think they were looking at this as an opportunity to voice their concerns, because some policies in the comp plan address things like water quality or air quality. That's why they were in front of the Planning Commission.
So, who do they go to? Just for our own advocacy.
So, we, there is, code enforcement is part of the Development Services Department. So, if it's a city regulation, that's where you go to. For the, if it's like clean air, you know, the emissions, then there is, there's a process for that, too, of who to call. There is a, cities can submit comments on behalf of an individual that calls the city to complain, so there is a process in place for that as well.
It's the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency that has jurisdiction over that?
It just, yeah, it seemed like they, they and the city aren't getting particular satisfaction around these chronic issues.
I think, I don't, I don't know, I don't know the details, but there is sort of an agreement with Puget Sound Clean Air Agency and the city for submitting comments to the Clean Air Agency, and I believe that agreement is up for extension. Right now, it's sort of a trial program. And I think the reason for that trial program is, people are saying if people complain to the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, to get an inspector out here immediately, takes time. And so, there was an agreement then, if it was sort of during business hours, that they could call the city, and a city employee could go out there and see if there was a, an order, for example, and then they could report that to the Clean Air Agency to sort of verify that complaint.
And that's how you're operating now?
That's how it's operating right now. So, the city has really no enforcement action. It just kind of, I guess, passes on the complaint, or verifies the complaint, for then the Clean Air Agency to take action on those complaints.
Anything else? Mark?
Just out of curiosity, how about water quality? Who's the relevant agency that--
It could be several agencies, depending, but more than likely Department of Ecology. But again, people often start with the city calling in to file a complaint, and if it's not within the city's jurisdiction, the city will often, will notify those agencies.
Do I hear a motion to approve the comp plan revisions proposed by the staff?
I still move.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Alright. Discussion?
Excuse me, who moved? Who moved that? Was it Deborah or Mike?
Deborah moved.
Deborah.
There was a little tussle over the second. I think Angela won. Sounds like broad support, however. No discussion? All in favor of proposed changes to the comp plan recommended by the city staff? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposing, say nay. Any abstentions? I see none, therefore, the motion carries, and the recommendations are approved. Alright, Lori, anything else?
No, except now would be the time to talk about the presentation on June 1st. So, what we would anticipate is, we had the public hearing draft. The final draft will be prepared, and as I mentioned, the figure numbers will be changed. There's an improvement in quality to one or two of the maps, et cetera. So, those, that will be put together and then sent out. The ordinance, the final ordinance that will be in front of the council might look very different, because individual sections are being adopted or amended. But for the June 1st meeting, where you will present your recommendation to council, it will look very similar to the public hearing draft that you all have seen.
Okay.
I have a question.
Angela?
Does the City Council also see the, some of the revisions that were actually made, or do they just get the final? For example, in the, like, the public services or utilities, like, do they see the type of data that was removed?
When we presented the background information, we did not put in the old data, at least when we presented the first part of it at the June 20th meeting. If, there could be a couple of approaches to that. One would be to say that the background data has been eliminated and is replaced with the current updated information. We could include all of that existing information, but in our, the way we've done our format, it would all be yellow and strike through, and it would be many pages of that. So, that's why we took it out of the version that they saw on June 20th, the few elements that they saw, because we felt that that was distracting and not particularly helpful. You may have a perspective on that.
I only ask because I was wondering if that might be something we'd want to proactively address, knowing that they might question why, why the data wasn't updated, you know, one per one, apples, apples to apples. It was updated slightly differently, so I thought that might be background information we might provide to them.
So, would you recommend staff, Angela, explain that?
Or, I think we can also.
Okay. Which gets to, does anybody want to take a piece of the presentation? And, you know, is there a particular topic that you would like to speak on behalf of the commission about? It sounds like the typical format would take place, as we had at the previous joint meeting. There's not a lot for us to say on this. There's a lot of material. They're going to have it, they're going to have read it. It's obvious there are some areas they're more interested in than others. Lori, I assume you'll be giving the overview.
Yeah, I'm happy to give an overview. If I, if I do that, I would anticipate doing something similar to what we did at the last joint meeting, where really, you talked about the substantive, most of the substantive changes. So that I would just add in a few more bullet points about the items that they have not seen to this point.
Okay.
For example, I'll give you an example. In the natural environment element, we changed a definition, and that was at the request of the Department of Ecology. So, that is one natural environment thing that I would pull out and probably mention to them. But I wouldn't anticipate spending a lot of time in those other elements, just because you didn't make a lot of, per your charge, you didn't make a lot of substantive changes.
Right. Angela, would you like to speak to the difference in the data points from the last comp plan?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And does, does the commission have a preference for approach as to how that is presented? Again, we chose--
Your overview is presented?
That background data, we chose not to include all of the old data, and then cross it out and make it in yellow. It's multiple pages. But if you think that that would be somehow helpful in your discussion, we can take a different approach.
Well, I was thinking, I was asking because I was wondering if they had seen it, and then if they got an updated draft, they would notice that that data might have, might have been removed, or might not have been updated exactly as it was in the first draft. So, that's why I was wondering how much we might speak to that. If they've never seen it, then I might, it might just be adequate to make a general statement that, you know, compared to the previous version, we didn't have some of this data. We updated with whatever information we had access to at this time. And maybe mention, you know, some of it was based on King County records that no longer apply now.
Yeah, the, so, the City Council, certainly the existing Comprehensive Plan is where all that data exists. So, they've seen that. They also have seen all of your packets, that those go to the City Council. So, they would have seen those earlier versions. I mean, if they were following along, they would have seen those earlier versions that showed all the changes that were made, so. So. It's kind of-
So I, I wasn't proposing that we give them all of that fine nitty gritty detail. I really just wanted to point out to them, this is why, if you're familiar with the original comp plan, this is the general change to that data.
Gotcha.
So I'm, I'm fine-
I don't have the good do that.
Right, and I'm fine however you guys want to do it. Angela, if you want to speak to it, if you want Lori to speak to it, I think either is fine. But I don't see any, uh, I don't see any stakeout of particular topics among commissioners. Mark?
I just want to clarify, we've already gone, the transportation and the pros plan, those aren't going to be part of-
No.
Whatever we present, just the most recent, okay.
No, there was all-
Even though these are part of the whole, the whole package.
It will be a new comprehensive, remember on the transportation element, there was just that one, a couple of policies, three changes that you made, you added in, you know, the ferry, the light rail, so there was a couple of, there's some minor changes that you made there, but other than that, no, the element would be like you previously recommended.
Well, they obviously had an interest in a couple of areas. As Deborah pointed out, housing was the one about which they spoke the most. Would it be helpful for the commission to have a majority position in response to some that may come up at the next joint meeting on that subject?
I, I'm not sure that, that there was, at least I did not perceive any kind of a conflict between what this planning commission was recommending and what the council was interested in. I think that their interest in pursuing specific techniques for affordable housing really would be addressed by the housing strategy plan, and I think they, I think by the conclusion of the meeting, my perspective was that they were comfortable with that, and it was more just a question of when, how quickly the housing strategy plan could move forward. It wasn't that they, they didn't like the housing strategy plan idea, or they were looking for something else.
I think what it did was it provoked a discussion that a lot of them had been thinking about.
Right.
And I don't know if, if other commissioners, and this is strictly up to a majority of us, want to say something on the subject, to influence, or to, you know, respond, or to facilitate a broader discussion of that topic. It may come up again, and, so I'm just opening the floor to anybody's interest in having a, a majority response. I don't know if we should or shouldn't, but I, you know, they're going to, it may come up and they may, and I think it's constructive in that sense. It's obviously an important subject, it's a good forum for multiple ideas to be discussed and approaches. They don't get a lot of that, I think, at typical council hearings.
Maybe rather than trying to, I think, you know, my concern is, is that I, I really want to make sure that this plan gets adopted.
Right.
So I want to keep that on track. Maybe you could offer to say, you know, there's obviously a lot of council interest in implementing aspects of the housing element, including developing a housing strategy, and, you know, as a commission, we would be happy to join you at a future joint meeting for a study session to talk about some topics that you may want to consider in the housing strategy. It's sort of a next step, so rather than sort of putting everything on hold right now, it would be, let's kind of get through this process, recognize that there is some urgency, and maybe before the council considers adding this to the docket next year, that you would be open to a study session to talk about housing affordability in general.
No, I completely agree. I would only, was only proposing this in the context of responding if they brought it up after having approved and dealt with the necessary plan amendments. I wasn't going to interfere with that, but if the topic came up and they seemed to be discussing things after the necessary steps were taken, that might, there might be a majority of commissioners who want to have a response to whatever they may say. But I like what you're saying, I'm fine with it. I'm just opening the floor to my colleagues to see if you guys-
Suggestion.
I'm sorry?
It's just a, just a suggestion.
It's a good one. It's a good one. In fact, I'm inclined to go that way. It's a pretty meaty subject. So, Mark?
Well, I agree with that approach of just sort of raising awareness of the issue. I don't feel I have anywhere, you know, near enough information to actually have an opinion or a perspective until we spend a lot more time on it, but certainly to raise it as an issue that we're aware of and would like to, you know, address through the housing strategy plan or whatever venue. To me, that's the, that's the way to go.
Yeah, and in fact, that's what I'd like to know, is Debbie's made a good suggestion, proposing that we have a joint study session if they want to discuss it further. I like that idea. Both sides get more briefing on that particular point, but it, I would like to participate in, at some level, before they make a concrete decision, changing the law, because I think there's some urgency and there is a reasonable chance that one of these affordable housing parcels might be sold before we get a chance to address it. So I see a lot of heads nodding, so would it be reasonable for, for me or any of us to say, hey, we're open to and encourage you to have a joint session on this, a study session on the subject? Would be happy to participate. Mike?
I think it is a meaty and a very important subject. I understand Debbie's concern, is I'm sure that we need to get through this, we need to get this off. My concern, as you were speaking about this, Doug, was that I think the, I think the city council, or at least a good number of the members, feel the same way, that this is a meaty issue, and I'd hate to see us get, get this sidelined into that bigger discussion. So if we got through this, and maybe the, I like Debbie's suggestion, maybe a way to do this is, in the past, we've, on other occasions, we've presented a letter where we got to this point, to the, to the city council, saying, here's our work, and saying, just as you phrased it, that we would be happy and would like to participate in a broader discussion of this in the future. And leave it there, rather than necessarily bringing it up as a point for discussion at the meeting, which could get us sidetracked. If what we want to do is express our willingness and interest in doing this, we can do that, I think, without having to make that part of the formal statement of the meeting.
Anybody else? Any other, I think it's a fair proposal. Anybody prefer the letter to a, an oral statement at the joint meeting? Or not prefer it? Yes, Angela?
I, I think I agree with Mike's suggestion of using a letter, because I don't want it to prevent them from moving forward with the housing element. At the same time, I think it shows them that we are taking that issue seriously, we understand that it's a big meaty topic that needs further discussion, and maybe that will also help mitigate some of their, their immediate anxiety over, over not being able to address it till 2016.
Yeah. Okay. See a lot of heads nodding. Sounds good, Mike. I think that's, that should be our position. And I will say, too, and this goes more to the veteran commissioners, it's an odd phrase, because Deborah's the most veteran commissioner, but before you, you were appointed, we had taken it up more, at more length, at some length, in fact, November and December. So I think we have already a pretty fair degree of background on it, although I would like to revisit it and, and have Arch and other discussion of it before we did that. But I'm, I think, I know where we're going on that, and I think we'll, we'll come up with a letter, maybe at another meeting, or circulated draft.
So here, there are two approaches here.
Okay.
Uh, if you want to meet on May 19th, we can have a letter and you can review it. If you don't, then we get, the commission could delegate a member, the chair, someone to, to review the letter that we could prepare, and then they could edit and, and sign. So, your choice.
You would, I'm sorry, we would appoint a delegate, you would prepare a draft, delegate would look at the draft to agree with you. You could finalize the letter without having a meeting-
Correct.
-or any communication among a quorum, so we don't have an OPMA problem.
Right.
Then you'd have a letter you could submit to the council on June 1st.
Yes, correct.
Is that right? Okay. But the letter's going to simply be an invitation. It's not going to get into substance.
The, the, I think the substance of the letter would be, we're happy to present our-
Right.
...recommendations on the 2015 comprehensive plan update at our joint meeting on April, or, uh, April 20th. We heard a concern expressed about affordable housing, particularly related to the mobile home parks, and we share that concern. We would be very interested in joining with you, I'm composing this in my head-
Yeah.
-joining with you to have a broader discussion about this issue at your convenience. I mean, that's kind of what I would see it saying.
Do you think maybe we make reference to the fact we did discuss it at some and examine this at some length and with Arch as part of preparing our amendments to the housing element?
I don't know that we really specifically discussed the mobile home park issue.
No, we didn't.
Certainly the affordable housing issue.
Right, right. But it just is, is, gives more weight to the value we might be able to contribute. Mike?
Perhaps you could broaden the language. Instead of focusing specifically on the mobile homes, we say affordable housing-
Right.
-for instance.
Right.
And then, that, then you could reference the work we've already done, and I think, we don't want to just tech up mobile homes. We, I think we need to have a broader look at this, so we should include that in the invitation.
Somebody want to volunteer to be a delegate to consult with staff on the language of a commission letter? Mike?
I would volunteer, but I would make a suggestion first. I think we have the language.
Yeah? So maybe we can just agree right now?
Yeah, I think we could take a motion to approve that, and then we're done. I'll make a motion that we approve the language.
Second. Discussion.
Can you just repeat it, Lori, just so we-
It's in my head.
I'd like to hear what we're agreeing on.
Lori was surprised we had the language.
That's why we're recording you.
Oh, there we go, it's recorded.
You can go back and listen to the recording.
I, I can tell you what the high points were. We're passing along the recommendation. We know you raised the issue of affordable housing, mobile home parks, for example. This is a, a topic that we discussed at length during the housing element. We take this issue seriously, and we would like to participate in a broader discussion with you if you wish to do so in a joint meeting. So, again, that's my second reprise, not as good as the first one, perhaps, but if I hit the high points, we'll go from there.
Good. Thank you. Are we good? Okay.
All right. So-
So you can fine tune that a little bit with our consent, but I think we're in agreement on the smarter-
Make full sentences.
Right.
So that was a Mike move, and who seconded that? The other Mike?
Mike and Mike, makes it easy.
Mike, um, second. All right, thank you.
All right. Anything else? So we approved the comp plan recommendations, we've got, there's not much in terms of delegating speaking at a presentation, because we just covered this at the last presentation.
Right. Unless there's something you particularly want to bring up.
Right, and that's what I'd already, yeah.
You, someone might speak to the vision statement, that's probably, you did respond, that was the other topic really that came up, and, and you made some amendments, so someone might want to-
Uh, I'm fine doing it, but I'm happy having anyone else do it if they'd like. No? Okay, I'll say a few words. And it's essentially that we adopted what the staff recommended, and that was largely based on what you, the council, expressed at the last joint meeting. Hard to believe they'd object to it. So that'll be my one sentence elaboration. Angela?
Maybe it might be good to address the revisions we made to that active, the recreation actor.
You're hired. Thank you for volunteering. Speak to you. Okay, so Angela's got two speaking roles. All right, I agree. Anything else? Nobody's willing, or anxious to-
Well, we already covered-
Use the forum?
We already covered, like you said-
No, I agree, I was just thinking of-
It's redundant to repeat it, right?
Repeat what, Mark?
The changes that we've already made to, you know, the utilities element, the, the other, the other policies.
Yeah, I think so. I agree. All right, that's it. Anything else?
I might speak a little bit about what we are sort of envisioning over the next few months. So the work plan that was given to us, again, for 2015, involves a revisiting, this is with the city council, not with the planning commission, of the transit-oriented development district overlay. So that is something that we anticipate taking back to the city council. It went through the downtown task force, many, many, two years of meetings. It went to the council, and then some of you will recall that the council directed that it be looked at in the context of the regional business zone project, and perhaps the boundaries adjusted for this overlay district. So the planning commission did that last year, and it's now, the whole package is ready to go back to city council. It's been through its downtown task force process, it's in front of the city council. We're going to revisit it, reintroduce it. I anticipate that the city council will hold a public hearing. That's a long way of saying that's where much of the department's focus will be over the next few months. We anticipate or are hoping that we may be able to bring forward the tree, uh-
Urban forestry?
It was, it was one kind of issue about wind, when trees have been moved on one lot, that it sort of affects trees on adjoining lots, or potential for those trees entered to fall. So it was that one issue that the council were interested in, do we, are the regulations sufficient to address that topic? So that's one topic that was on your work program.
Right. And so it may be that that second meeting in June, or early in July, we'll be able to bring something forward on that.
Yeah, Deborah?
Well, I thought the tree issue was a little bit broader than that. I mean, that was-
The types of trees also?
Yeah, that was my recollection, it was a little more to it. No?
Not the way it was presented to the council in January.
I think the, the planning commission were interested in broadening that topic.
Ah, okay.
But that's, that's not the topic that was the council approved on the work program. So the planning commission were interested in broadening the topic of trees in a number of areas, views and all kinds of, urban forestry and all kinds of things. But those would be sort of for a future docket, and this is a very limited item.
So, we're done with this, June 1st, we have, what you're saying, our TOD?
No, the TOD-
But that's going back to the council.
The TOD is going to the council.
Right.
So what do we have?
So we think we may be able to bring forward this tree issue, but we're not certain that, uh, that we will be able to do that.
We can do more.
You can do more, but there's, there's two of us.
So, and then, and taking the TOD, I will say, taking the TOD back to council is, is a major effort, so that will, for a brief time, divert our attention from the planning commission.
Right, okay. But then, on the agenda, you're saying after, after June 1st, all we have is this tree topic?
No, um, no, 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 not at all.
No, no, that was the first thing that's going to come back, because that was, seemed to be something that, that maybe we, we have an intern, which we're hoping we can kind of help bring that forward sooner, because we don't really have the capacity to do that immediately. And then the other topic was micro housing.
Micro housing, and then, so that would become in the fall, probably, and then, if, depending on how long that takes, or the, the scope of that project, which has not been scoped at this point, it may be that we would pick up, and the council directed us to pick up some of the 2016 items, at least that were 2016 items last year, including a couple of smaller ones. I can't remember what they were exactly.
PAUE, was it?
Maybe, I don't remember.
You're saying we're going to accelerate the 2016 docket to this year because we moved through it so fast? The current docket?
So, when, in January, when we took the 2015 docket to the city council, we explained that there were a number of things in front of the planning commission, and one of those was micro housing, and we were not sure how big an item that would be. There was also the potential, now no longer the potential, that the marijuana regulations might need to be revised for medical marijuana issues. That does not appear to be the case, but we kind of left more time available in 2015 in case these other things were bigger than we thought. And therefore, they said, if you don't get, I mean, if these are small and you have time in 2015, feel free to move ahead on some of these 2016 items, or at least get them started.
Right.
Right. And they directed us to do that.
And that was, micro housing was one of them?
No, micro housing was a 2015 one.
Okay, so what's on, what's the potential docket for the-
That's what I don't remember, exactly. One is telecommunications. I know that's a very large docket item for 2016, the telecommunications chapter is the one that comes to mind.
Well, okay. Maybe next time.
Right.
We'll have a better sense.
Yeah.
All right. We're so darn efficient. All right, anything else? Anything else? Any new business? Anything, anybody want to talk about other city matters, like you've been dealing with or familiar with? Given that we've moved so quickly tonight. Nothing? All right.
Well, anybody want to volunteer for the waterfront fair next week on 14th? Four to seven at Squire's Landing Park? Just let me know.
I'm sorry, where, Deborah?
The waterfront fair is next Thursday night. Four to seven on the water at Squire's Landing. Lots of fun. Need some help.
Do they, is that the new one?
Yeah.
Okay. Do they have a path that's easy to...
Do they have?
Do they have a path? Do they have routing signs and a path that makes it easy to get there?
Uh, there is a sign there now. It's a small sign. There's not sufficient parking, so for an event like that, we'll be parking people offsite.
But you're saying there's no problem getting from 175th to the park?
Well, right. There's a driveway easement. I mean, there's, there's a drive, there's a road.
Yeah.